Being the appointed hour, we call the meeting to order. I'll call the roll.
Bouchon?
Here.
Gillum?
Here.
Harret? Finley?
Here.
Rutherford?
Here.
Shaw?
Salter?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Please join me in invocation.
Almighty God, we come before you this evening with thankfulness in our hearts for the abundance of blessings that you have given us, including the ability to live and work in this great city. Lord, we come to you tonight with special prayer for Marshall Moreno, that you would be with him and his family and the doctors, and that you would give them the tools and techniques that they need to deliver him from this terrible cancer which he is afflicted with. We pray for all those in our community who are suffering with cancer, that they could find peace and comfort and guidance for the physicians and healing by your hand, Lord. We also pray for those who are ill and infirm, widowed and orphaned and in need, cause us to help where and when we can. Lord, we thank you for this commission. We appreciate the work that they do, and we ask that you would be with us tonight as we go about doing the work of this city, that you would lay special guidance upon our city commission, that they may know the right things to do that would be pleasing unto you. As we leave from here this evening, go with us, guide us, keep us safe from harm, and we'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
Thank you. Join me in flag salute, intention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Moved by Commissioner Gillum. Second. Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Item number two, citizens' participation. We have, this is a time that we allow citizens to come forward and speak their piece on things. We have a three-minute per person limit and a 12-minute per topic limit. This is not the time to speak if you're here for one of the public hearings that's a later item on the agenda. Otherwise, come to the podium, tell us who you are, sign in, and speak your piece. Seeing none, item three, presentation by the city manager to employee of the month, Michael Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, please join me up front, sir. Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, this is Michael Johnson. He's our employee of the month. Mr. Johnson is a lifelong Shawnee resident. He and his wife, Tedra, have two boys. He is a sci-fi enthusiast and collector of vintage video games. He began working for the city in June of 2017. He works in the Parks Department and recently became responsible for the downtown route. He has eagerly accepted the changes, is always ready to do what is needed, and has an excellent attitude and a strong work ethic. His positive attitude and good spirit is contagious and has lifted the morale of the entire department. He's an outstanding asset to the Parks Department and the City of Shawnee, and I'm pleased to congratulate him this evening. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Item four, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2606 NS, changing the name of the Shawnee Beautification Committee to the Shawnee Community Beautification Committee, providing for severability, codification, or repealer, and providing for emergency.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is something that the Beautification Committee's been talking about for some time, and now that we have a full staff on there of 10, they've come up with a motto for the committee, and they just felt like that changing the name from City of Shawnee Beautification Committee to Shawnee Community Beautification Committee just sounded like maybe it included a lot more people than, you know, just kind of what an institutionalized name would do. And I feel that this is something, and they feel that this is something that they can own and feel good about. So it is staff's recommendation to change. If y'all don't have any questions?
Are there any questions of Mr. Price?
It seems like it does kind of personalize it just a little bit more, doesn't it? Brings it down closer to home.
Yeah.
I agree.
Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Commissioner Gillum, is there a second?
Second.
Was that?
Ben.
Commissioner Salter? Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2606 NS, changing the name of the Shawnee Beautification Committee to Shawnee Community Beautification Committee, providing for severability, codification, and repealer, and providing for emergency.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Is there a motion to adopt emergency clause?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by everyone. Commissioner Gillum, I think I heard. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item five, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located east of the intersection of Highland Street and Bryan Avenue from R1, Single Family Residential District, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, case number PO118, applicant Landrum Group LLC, deferred by Planning Commission at the March 7, 2018 meeting, deferred from the January 16, 2018 city commission meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. First case we have today, as described in the agenda, is located on Highland Street, east of Bryan Avenue. If you're a bit more familiar with the area, this will be just west of Country Club Road and part of the Country Club Heights addition. The requested use is to take one individual lot that has been previously platted back in 1977, and really breaking this out into 16 individual lots for higher-density residential. So in total, it would be 16 lots on about two acres, which is pretty high, pretty high Generally, from this development, they include a planned unit development proposal, a design statement with it. The overall design for the site would be nice, nice brick veneer structures gated, fenced around the sides, and would also include a community building with golf cart storage to be associated with the Country Club. When staff reviews cases such as this, when looking at increasing the higher density, we look at three major things. The first is the general zoning for the adjacent properties. If you look north of Highland Street, historically, this has primarily been one-lot, single-family residential uses. That includes Country Club Heights addition, along with the other two additions that are located on that south side of the section. However, on the south side of Highland Street, two individual properties about 20 years ago were rezoned to R3 multifamily residential, neither of which have at this time actually been converted into multifamily residential. We next look at the comprehensive plan, which states for this particular area allowances for residential use, and this ranges from single-family residential all the way to multifamily residential. Lastly, we look at Highland Street and recognize that it is a major arterial in the City of Shawnee and elsewhere, particularly west of Bryan Avenue on Highland Street. You recognize the uses, high-density commercial uses, higher-end multifamily residential. It's the same for Independence Street, MacArthur, and some of the others as well. So it is consistent in our past to allow similar transfers to higher-density uses along our major quarters. However, individually with this particular project, we started this process back in January and included a number of conditions that really caused the deferral for 60 days or to March. And the main reasons for that are, first, as part of their design statement, there were a couple of things that were not approvable by city staff, one of which being the stormwater mitigation measures that they put in place, they just don't coincide with the city's codes. The second was the addition of several points of language for this type of development. This development mirrors what we used to have in our zoning code, which was called R1Z, and that allows properties to actually be placed on a property line. And due to the fact that we're placed on property lines, we have an abundance of language that allows for common access, basically maintenance area to access that side of your property on your adjacent property owner's land, along with rainwater runoff and so forth having to be maintained on the property. We included those points of language to be added. And lastly, was a request from staff just to explore the general Country Club area and its conformance to such a use. So jumping to March, really my update from January to March is that, one, in fact, if you have your PDF packets, this should be on page 95. It is Exhibit 7, and it is my updated staff report for March. And in this, I generally summarize the three points of why we deferred the case. The first one being allowing the developer a chance to speak to property owners in this particular neighborhood and see if a resolution could be made. The second one is to provide the applicant an opportunity to resolve city concerns, which I've already mentioned. And the last was, again, to explore the Country Club area in just further depth. So what I do provide in this Exhibit 7 is a summary of the Country Club neighborhoods as they were established, starting in the 1970s. And lastly, just give a general staff summary of the recommendation. For staff, because we had a number of required changes between January and March, and none of those were met between those 60 days, we had no resolution from the city staff side. Staff can't obviously recommend approval at this point due to having those additional conditions needing to be met. Secondarily, the major focus of this particular case has been the covenants that have been in place since the mid-1970s for not only Country Club Heights 1, but also Country Club Heights 2. And these covenants very specifically state that each one of these individual lots shall be maintained as single individual lots with only one single-family residential house being built on these lots. This request is in, appears to be in conflict with these particular covenants, and generally when staff looks at covenants, we don't enforce covenants. However, they mostly are applied to single-family residential neighborhoods, upping beautification standards and so forth, not so much as far as the regulation of the land use on the site. In this particular case, because it appears this site is in conflict with the development that is proposed, staff really believes that until that is remedied via an amendment to the covenants or an agreement between the developer and, obviously, those associated with the Country Club Heights neighborhood, that staff review should discontinue at this point. So with that, staff does not believe a deferral will do the trick. I've discussed this with several of the members of the Country Club Heights addition. It's not looked like we will have any kind of compromise happen anytime soon. So with that, staff cannot recommend approval and certainly does not recommend deferral of this item either. At that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have for me.
But it does seem that, to say that the, let's say, west of that location would be similar type or in any way comparable to what is east of, it's just not feasible.
Sure.
You have a dividing line with the church, you have other things there that do not meet the looks and general latitude of that to the west.
Sure.
And plus the density. There's a couple of things that bother me there.
Completely understood. And my point behind Highland Street being an arterial and having those uses elsewhere is just to mean that in the future, there's certainly a chance, whether that be 20, 30, 40 years down the path, that higher-density development may happen in those particular areas. It's just a pattern, I suppose.
I guess we're running into a lot of problems finding places for new homes as well, as I understand. And I understand that. But the situation is, to change something like this would be a mistake. I think it's not commensurate with the area. The dividing line is most definitely right there, and beyond that, there's nothing that would be approaching what we're talking about.
Thank you. Any other questions, Justin? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, do we need a motion to approve or deny?
Yeah, we just need to close the public hearing, and then if there is no motion, it would die.
Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Hearing none, the matter is disposed of. Item six, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 7109 North Kickapoo Avenue from A1 Rural Agricultural District to A1 Rural Agricultural District with a conditional use permit, case number PO318, applicant Nelman Browning, deferred by the Planning Commission to March 7, 2018 meeting, deferred from the January 16, 2018 city commission meeting.
Thank you. As mentioned, the subject's site is located on the northeast corner of Kickapoo and Gearslake Road, just approximately 157 acres in size, and the application has come forward in January for request to get a condition use permit on this site to allow for flea market-type use. As it's owned right now in A1, that's not currently allowed, but with this conditional use permit, the commission has the ability to set conditions to make sure that such a use would comply with all city standards. The applicant has made it pretty well-known that he wants to maybe try out a flea market, see how it works, but in the future, if it is successful, possibly convert this site into more of a commercial investment and actually build some structures. And I believe Canton, Texas is an example that was brought up once or twice as a similar type use. To describe this particular area, the comprehensive plan designates this for industrial-type use, which in a nutshell just allows for higher-density allowances. It's very low-density in general in this particular area, and we have two major roads being Kickapoo and Gearslake Road that surround this property. So in reviewing the request, staff does have 12 conditions listed here, and the main reason for these, really the large amount of conditions we have, is just to assure, since the city does not have a private property event permit currently, we still need to make sure that everything that happens on-site does comply with city, state, and federal laws. So it's quite a bit there, but staff spent a full two months really exploring what other cities have done statewide, nationwide, in similar circumstances. So staff is going to make a recommendation to approve this condition use permit. I'd like to go through at least four of these conditions with you, just to better explain what I'm talking about. So I suppose the first one to bring up is that an event plan and map would be required 30 days prior to any events hosted on-site. And what this event would allow us to do is to describe where the parking will happen, make sure that all traffic flow happens off of our major roadways and on-site. It shows where restroom facilities will be, vendor locations, any signage, and really anything else the city might require of them at that point. Another condition listed is this will be restricted to two times per month, and this condition use permit will last for one year from the date of commission approval. So really, it's a test case to make sure that we are doing this properly and that we don't have any changes that we need. Since we have not done this in the past, this would be the safest approach for us to do. The last two conditions have been added. So there were 10 original conditions, but the Planning Commission, at their meeting in early March, requested two additional conditions, which are, events shall be contained to the southwestmost portion of their land out there. We had two members of the public come, the major complaint being if any event were to be hosted directly adjacent to their property, which would be, in this case, neither of those representatives were adjacent property owners, but that protection is for adjacent property owners in the event that, of course, is loud or obnoxious during these events. By their own willingness and the letter that is attached, they want to start this project out in the southwestmost 10 acres. And the last condition is events shall be limited to the weekend, defined as Saturday and Sunday, with additional allowances at the discretion of the planning director. And this is really to account for specific holidays that might fall on a Monday or Friday, where it might be possible to allow such a use to continue. With that, staff does recommend approval with 12 conditions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
They will be subject to our otherwise nuisance and noise ordinances?
Correct.
And those kinds of things. I'm sorry, Doug.
No, no, no. No matter what the activity, be it a concert, be it a flea market, the hours, and I'd seen it here, the hours were mentioned three different times with two different sets of hours. Two of them mentioned eight to five, one of them mentioned nine to five. I would say that majority rules in this case, but that explains any kind of activity ends at 5:00 PM, correct?
Not completely correct. So that would be hours of operation for actually hosting members of the public as far as tear-down and buildup. I would suspect that would happen before, mostly before, and possibly right after those hours.
Okay, but those hours would be subject to his approval?
That's...
I mean, the extended hours.
Sure, and I suspect those would be covered by our local ordinances. That would be noise ordinances and so forth that would end at about 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I admit, it's kind of intriguing, and it would automatically end in a year unless it's renewed.
That's correct.
I noticed in hearing that there was an item about they would be required to clean up, and everything after.
Yes, sir.
My heartburn is going to be, I don't want it to end up looking like northeast 23rd Street around Air Depot and on the east from there to where makeshift display tables have been made and were just out there turned over during the week and everything, so...
That's a very, very good point. That's why we added that condition, along with the revocability clause that we built into, that if they're not following these rules, we certainly have that option to end the condition use permit at that time. But that's a very good point that was brought up over and over again in my research.
So it would not be an eyesore when it's not in use?
Correct.
It would be all cleaned up and just like it was before they went in?
Sinage included. Aside from certain allowances on your property, event signage can't be left out for all periods of time.
Is this going to be a secure site?
I'm sorry?
A secure site by means of a gate? I mean, is the area going to be...
Enclosed.
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Essentially, any overflow parking, they'll keep that fairly open.
No, I guess what I'm referring to is when there's not an event in place? Is the area gated? Is the property closed off?
I don't believe so.
And the only complaint you had was being closed or it would go on to someone else's property, which was not adjacent to where the activities take place?
Correct. Major complaints that we had are just overall, general concerns anybody might have.
The concerns we all have.
Exactly, exactly, for flea market-type use, including the trash pickup and what items can or cannot be sold at such a flea market, which, again, staff has deemed any local, state, and federal requirements are ones that we can uphold as well, so...
And without, following through with that, we could end this process immediately?
That's exactly right, yes, sir.
Are there notice requirements to the revocation and whatnot?
I'm not listing any notification requirements, no.
Thank you. Declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal?
Nelman Browning?
And the owner's got a town, right? He'd be here. Is it okay to pass these out, Justin? It's just an aerial view showing you that how many neighbors are actually around this property. The neighbor right adjacent to it, he's offering to be our sort of security guard out there. I think the owner is planning on fencing the property, the whole property. He's done that in previous property. We plan on putting forty pots around temporarily. We know if we do anything permanently, we'll have to go through subdivision, planning and all that. We already know that. He wants to put in gravel roads for the traffic and parking along in the grass, but he wants roads so they can drive on. And we have two people that wants to be our website people, build a website, and then people can online sign up to come. We're hoping that, just to get started, we're going to go slow, but I think it's going to take us like 90 days or so to get all this going before we can actually have one. Because by the time you put the roads in, the website, the people signed up, stake off the lots, because we don't want them scattered everywhere, we want them just like in little rows. And I put a little design in one in Florida I go to all the time. And the timeframe is going to be a little rough for us for that year. If we can start 90 days after the year, that would help give us time to get really going before we have to shut it all off. We have one of the Christian here. Oh, the 10 acres now. I know you all know how big 157 acres is, but sometimes at the parking, we start getting bigger and bigger. We might want to go over into part of the land for parking. What do we have to do? Do we have to come back and get permission to add on more parking for clients, customers?
I wouldn't think so. Oh, not for something like overflow parking. We can, part of that event plan and the map, that's something we'll discuss at that time, mostly for the setup for vendors and so forth.
Oh, yeah. We want them lined up so that they call, and we can go into row two, bin number four, and that's their spot for that particular time. I want it neat. Don't have a whole lot to say about it, but I want it neat. And I think it's going to be good for the town. I do a lot of retail here in town, like Shalowskis and Rib Crib and all that stuff. But this is the first time I've tried this, and the owners always wanted to do it. And so when he bought that land, I said, "Well, try it here." Tough, it's in the city limits, but we'll try to work with you. We've got forty pots, we've already got vendors talking about coming with crafts and stuff, and we've got food trucks that are asking to come, so we know we've got to meet the health requirements and...
A question about the parking.
Yes, sir.
You show very clearly delineated lines. Is this just an area that's there, or do you have ways of delineating each of those spaces so you could get a car safely in and it wouldn't be a hodgepodge?
Yeah. The one I go to down in Florida, you go in on an angle mostly, you pull in off the main road and just park and get out, back up, just up and down the roads, just like any other shopping center, like Rib Crib out there.
So you have the roads basically going in, figuring, do you have anything to start those? Because they could become very, as I said, pretty much a hodgepodge, and what's the distance between those areas that you have there? Are they sufficient to say they're coming in?
Well, see, I'm sort of familiar with, once I put in Rib Crib and engineering and stuff, I sort of know that how far the cars got to be apart so they can back out and not hit nobody, and there's a lot of...
That's one thing I've been concerned about.
Is that going to be possible demarcation for parking?
I presume this is the area then.
No, no, I see, I know the area. I'm just, are you asking her if there's going to be basically a parking spot?
No, just, there's methods of having control where it's done safely, and people will understand the way that they're supposed to park. That's all.
Yeah. Well, we're going to have, like, each street will have their little signs out there and the directions of where to go, like little directional signs. You go in this way, and you go out that way. Yeah, we don't want nobody to get hurt. He's already talked to insurance companies about insurance on the property. So I think it's really going to be a, once it can get going, because there's nothing hard to do on weekends around here.
I'm concerned about that because most accidents happen in parking lots.
Yeah.
You know, it's the most dangerous place you can have a car.
Yeah.
That's all.
Other questions? Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal?
I thought the people were good at time, but I guess I'm a long razor. My name is Patty Baker. I live on 30 acres of property, about three-quarters of a mile north of this intersection, which I believe is at Garrett's Lake in Kickapoo. Knowing, having known the family that owned that corner... I live on thirty acres of property, about three quarters of a mile north of this intersection, which I believe is at Garrett's Lake in Kickapoo. Knowing, having known the family that owned that corner for years, I've been here since nineteen eighty-three. I didn't, I don't get the papers, so I didn't read about this when it came about in January, but I, you know, we have major plants out there. We have Eaton, we have, well, what used to be Wolverine and Mobil. So we have a lot of plant traffic that comes out there, trashes my, itches in front of my house with just food wrappers and everything when they go to town to eat. And, and if we, we get a, a lot of people coming through that nick of the woods, and there's a lot of traffic on Garrett's Lake Road there, a whole lot of traffic in Kickapoo. And if I'm not mistaken, there's been more deaths at that corner than just about any intersection north of town. There's been quite a few over the years. And I guess maybe when I heard this lady talking, I'm not against business, and I'm, you know, I live right across the street from your industrial park, so I'm not against and that's major, you know, development. I live right across from Telling, what, what used to be Terrence Telling, Pet Products, right across the big red, white, and blue building. So across from my south pasture. But I guess I have this nightmare of seeing something that looks down on that corner that looks just like the flea market south of the river in North Dale City on Brian Street, where you have big, open dirt parking, and when it rains, you've got potholes and all kinds of stuff. And hers didn't sound terribly organized, when we're going to have this and we're going to have that, but we're going to figure it out as we go. I'd like to see a detailed plan, what it would look like, and I know most of the other landowners out there don't want their land devalued. We, you know, we don't let our property devalue. There's two beautiful homes that are just north of me. I'm fixing the ten mile farmhouse down, probably build a new one up this year anyway. But I just, I don't know. It just seems to me like, and, and idea of having flea markets, isn't major downtown Shawnee, it's kind of reminds me of Branson, flea markets within old buildings down here on Main Street. We've got a lot of flea market areas down here. And I wish people would populate downtown Shawnee a little bit more in some of these beautiful old buildings, where Gibson's used to be and places like that. Because I've been here a long time, and I grew up and went to St. Greckers, graduated in nineteen sixty-eight. But, and, and we, and then there's an open air one that I think is on the corner of Acme and MacArthur. There's a little on the southwest corner, there's a little fenced up out, open air area that looks like that. And as far as farmers' markets, we have one down on Hardesty. We have some that go in those parking lots south of the beard, when you're going towards the grain store, when I go get horse feed. And just about every rural corner where there's a driveway, farmers pull in and sell the cantaloupe, and there are a lot of them, and they're cornering stuff. So I don't know that those are areas that is really going to benefit this city. I mean, and the traffic, the traffic that's going to be involved with the flea market type business, and, and besides, there's not going to be crops year round. So most of it's going to be flea market or event. And then we've got the Black Poppin Stadium just crossed down the road, which is a big event center, you know, and, and there off the corner of, I don't know, that goes through there, because it doesn't go all the way to Kickapoo, but... So we have a lot of things like that around Shawnee. I don't know. I would rather almost see a real legitimate business that would bring lots of jobs to town rather than individual vendors. Not that it wouldn't be a source of income, but I don't know, I just have nightmares of seeing trash all over, going up and down. The wind blows like crazy out there on that hill. I don't know if you catch the very, then out there and stood there in the wind. But there's a lot more wind out there on that road than going up that major hill, because I'm level with OBU. Everything's deep between me at the top of the hill and straight across OBU, and it's like five to ten miles an hour more out there than it is in town. So the idea of not getting trashy, I think, is a pipe dream. And, and the idea of having parking areas which are going to be in open dirt, not going to be paved, probably won't be roped up, won't have those nice little headstones or whatever that people can park next to. I just think that would be more of an eyesore to the city than something that would really benefit it.
Okay.
But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm thirty acres, by the way.
I could point out that we have very few buildings downtown anymore that would qualify-
That would qualify like Branson?
... speaking about. There's been quite a bit of development done down our town, in our downtown.
But I mean, it seems to be, because people don't walk around, nor you pay them-
It does take a pretty sizable area, and it needs to be somewhat separated from other areas, which this would allow that to a degree. It would be by itself, it would be located and isolated as far as abutting other things that would be active. That would be, I think, the reason-
Well, if it's going to be right down in the corner of Kickapoo, that would be bad for traffic. I mean, if it was, if it, if it came off of Garrett's Lake Road, opening and entering, that's one thing. But we're talking about the, that corner. I mean, Kickapoo, like I said, there've been quite a few deaths there, not, and they're at that corner over the years, and there's permanent markers out there for people who have passed that are out there in memory.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any discussion among the board? Is there a motion to approve or deny?
Close the public hearing, ma'am.
Close the public hearing, I'm sorry. Is there a motion?
All tested and moved to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum or a second?
Is that with the twelve conditions?
Yes.
Excuse me?
With the twelve conditions?
Obviously, I'm sorry, of course, with conditions strongly observed.
Is there a second?
And we don't have, the, the notice that we'd have to give to cancel if things don't go as planned is minimal notice? No notice, I mean, we just note upon them?
They don't follow the rules, except for the map ability to basically kind of cut off that going, yeah?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, lots three and four, known as the west half of the southwest and the east half of the southwest quarter of Section nineteen, Township eleven north, range four east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, less than except a tract of land more further described in the ordinance. According to the recorded plat thereof, rezoning said property from zoning classification A1 Rural Agricultural District to A1 Rural Agricultural District with conditional use permit and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Call a question.
I have a question first. The zoning would stay in place though, the change to a conditional use, or is it specifically for that item?
It would remain classified.
In other words, we're changing the zoning from agricultural, but agricultural with conditional?
Correct.
Does that then, if we do approve this, and we then decide at some point that this is not going to be fittable there, the conditional use still stands as, with the, with the property?
Correct. It's just that that specific conditional use permit would be revoked.
Which means other things could go there that weren't originally intended.
Does that fit within the conditional use permit being approved?
With all the conditions? With the twelve conditions?
Well, they have to come and seek a permit, and it would be subject to whatever conditions would be imposed by planning and the commission.
Okay. So it's negotiable at that point?
Correct.
Okay.
So there would be no threat that it would remain if they decide, if we decide to kill this? It would have to come back for another condition?
Correct.
Okay, all right, just be sure.
Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item seven, public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at twenty-two oh four North Leo Avenue from R one, single-family residential district to R two, combined residential district, case number P oh four eighteen, applicant Merrick Call Brothers Real Estate LLC.
Thank you. The subject site here is located on Leo Street, south of MacArthur. Request is to rezone from R one to R two, which we have done to the properties, the two properties to the south of this one in the past ten years. The reason that those have been approved and why staff does recommend approval, once again, is the fact that these sites are on the periphery of the neighborhood, the R one neighborhood there and along a major collector for the city of Shawnee. Really not much more to it than that. Staff does recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Justin? Declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Close the public hearing. Is there any discussion among the board? Is there a motion? Chair moves to approve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, lot three, block eight, golden acres addition to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, rezoning said property from zoning classification R one, single-family residential district to R two, combined residential district, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item eight, public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at forty-nine hundred North Harrison Avenue from C three highway commercial to PUD, planned unit development, case number P oh five eighteen, applicant TLP Associated Inc., deferred by planning commission to the April fourth eighteen meeting.
Mr. Mayor, items eight and nine both refer to this exact same property, and planning commission has requested that we defer this until the April planning commission meeting.
That would be your April sixteenth city commission meeting.
Do we need to have the public hearing at this time, or are we going to do that again?
It can be deferred as well.
Is there a motion to defer?
Someone?
Was that Commissioner Bouchon? And Commissioner Gillum seconded. Is there any discussion? Call a question.
Are we doing both, just one?
We have to do them one at a time, I think.
Yeah.
Punch your button, Ron. Motion carries five zero. Be nice to him, Doug. Item number nine, consideration of approval of preliminary plat for Shawnee Retail Center located at forty-nine hundred North Harrison Avenue, case number S oh three eighteen, applicant TLP Associated, Associated Inc., deferred by the planning commission to the April fourth twenty eighteen meeting. Is there a motion to defer?
Move to defer to April sixteen.
Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon, seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Punch your button, Ben. Motion carries five zero. Item ten, public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at thirty-nine hundred North Union Avenue from A one Rural Agricultural District to R three multifamily residential district, case number P oh six eighteen, applicant Nellman Broning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The subject site for this case is located generally south of the Shawnee Middle School on Union. It is roughly twenty acres in size, currently zoned agricultural, and the request is to really use this site for a multi-unit retirement community. So with that R three, we'd be looking at four to six unit retirement type housing. It would include a clubhouse, storm shelter and so forth as part of this, this particular project. This developer's done a lot of work in Oklahoma City and the metro area in general. Does have several samples. One exhibit, which will be exhibit two for you, is, is one general layout that they have used in the past for, for similar uses. Because the site is, is a little awkward, there's, there's a creep that really runs through the middle of the site, running north to south. Most of the site, as I understand, would start on the east side where it is directly adjacent to Union. Again, because we are moving to multifamily residential, we do have a completely separate set of standards that apply for multifamily that include parking not be directly against the road, be behind the building, landscape standards, lighting must be internal and downward, really to protect this use against surrounding residential type uses. The comprehensive plan, this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan as far as residential use. Generally along the site, we do have the school to the north with their amenities that will be available to the public, making this a great, honestly, a great site for a retirement community. Residential to the south and to the east, we have a daycare center very close to this particular site. Staff has no conditions for this particular approval, but, but again, we do, we do recommend approval. I think this would be a benefit to the city. One major issue we have had on Union Street in this particular area is a lack of access to sewer. The sewer is really up along Forty-Fifth Street, and part of this development, the most realistic extension of the sewer line would be behind the school all the way to the site, which really opens up more land for development in the future. So with that, staff does recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Seems like a good site.
I agree.
And again, it does, the extension of the sewer does open up things that are not existing now as far as what we can deal with.
Yes, sir.
Just on exhibit two, the name that's on the existing sign, is this just an example?
Just an example.
That would be a little bit confusing in Shawnee, I believe.
It would be.
Any other questions? Thank you. We've opened the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposition?
Paul's my peoples in Mexico, I don't know what you're doing down here. But anyway, this gentleman's a very nice, big developer, and he came to town wanting a place to put a senior citizens' unit with a clubhouse and all. And I told him about this property, so he went over there and bought it, and he's, I think he's going to make a real nice one there for the city. It's going to be real nice. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer it.
Any questions?
He's ready to start as soon as-
Thank you.
As soon as we get this all done and approved, he's about ready to start dirt work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we close the public hearing. Is there a discussion among the board? Their motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Commissioner Gillum move we approve. Mr. Salter, second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, a tract of land located in the west half of Section six, Township ten north, range four east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, more particularly described in the ordinance, from zoning classification A one Rural Agricultural District to R three multifamily residential district, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item eleven, public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at twenty-three twenty-seven North Harrison Avenue from CP Land Shopping Center District to C three highway commercial district, case P oh seven eighteen, applicant Amerco Real Estate Company.
Thank you. The next site is located north of Federal, east of Harrison, and generally is known as the Kmart Building, which is approximately eighty-four thousand square feet, so quite a large structure for us to look at today. The applicant, Amerco Real Estate Company, is a subsidiary of U-Haul, and their request is to transfer from CP zoning, which is designated very specifically for shopping center type uses, very similar to C three, which is the requested zoning, just formalities are a little bit different, but the density is, is identical. The plan that U-Haul has for this particular site would be very similar to what you see at, in Midwest City off of the highway. It would really be a, an adaptive reuse of the structure where they will, aside from moving walls on the interior, there's not any exterior changes that are proposed at this time, but they will have really the three major, the three major components of most U-Hauls. They'll have the show center, the showroom. They will have personal storage on the interior, which is, my understanding, will be accessed only by the interior and not be outward facing towards the parking lot. And they will also rent their usual amenities being trailers and, and trucks and so forth. So really, in, in the last ten or fifteen years, what, what I've found from my research is that U-Haul has made a business of coming into town similar in size to Shawnee and taking these larger structures that become vacant, that have really a small market of reuse. So that might be a target, a Walmart, a Kmart in our particular case, but taking these sites that could go, could remain vacant for years to come, become dilapidated and become a real eyesore for the city. So this, this really becomes a, a pretty good opportunity for the city to have a pretty quick turnaround and, and another reuse for the site. In my staff report here, staff does indicate a few findings, which I'd like to go through real quick. At eighty-four thousand square feet, there's a limited market interest in reuse of such structures, as I've said before. Per the city's comprehensive plan, the Harrison corridor supports- plan, the Harrison corridor supports this type of use. C3 is directly around this particular site, up and down, all along Harrison Street, and most definitely in this particular area. So this change really won't affect that use in comparison to the comprehensive plan. And honestly, that's mirrored in the zoning code. We have surrounding uses that are C3 all along Harrison Street, and it would, of course, remain consistent with that. The site as it exists today already supplies appropriate parking and circulation. Additional, or sorry, additionally, traffic volumes will be, could possibly be reduced compared to the previous use on this site. The business, once completed, plans to employ 10 to 15 employees to the city. The U-Haul business is compatible, again, with the surrounding areas. We've had letters of protests come in, and we've had several members of the public come to the Planning Commission to voice their concerns. The major concerns that have been voiced are really from two parties. Directly to the east is a residential neighborhood, and major concerns, again, come with any commercial use that comes into these particular sites. And as I've emphasized once or twice already, I don't see, staff really doesn't see the density increasing for this site to a point that would affect the neighboring neighborhood in comparison to what's already exist and what's already allowable on this particular site. Second complaints are coming to the businesses that are directly north of the current Kmart Building. The main concerns are being the point of ingress and egress off of Dunlop Road. In the past, the daily traffic, the truck traffic that's come in to drop off supplies has made pretty well-rounded turns and affected their, not only their curbs, but the grass as well out there. So they're just concerned with any commercial entity coming in that might disrupt their existing site. At that, again, staff will reiterate conformance with the comp plan, the zoning code, and really find the use to be compatible with the surrounding areas and to be a benefit to the city. So with that, staff does recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What are the objections from the people that live to the east?
Mostly, it would be people coming in at all hours of the night to access this particular site. And I believe we do have present representative from the U-Haul that can better explain what the day-to-day operations look like on-site, but really, it was whether there would be lighting, whether it be secured via cameras, and just general nuisance that might occur, including, again, robbery and so forth, based on people being on that particular site.
But the ingress and egress to the building will be on the west?
That's exactly correct, yes.
Solely on the west?
Solely on the west, is my understanding.
And what are the objections from the people on Dunlop? Are these the tenants across the street?
That's exactly right. And generally, it's, that means of ingress and egress being used for truck traffic, not really meant for truck traffic. So when they round that corner, they've gone into their actual property and torn up some of the curb and the grass that they have on their site.
The semis can't make the swing.
That's it. The semis really can't make the swing.
Want that problem diminished?
I believe it would, to be honest, yeah.
They won't have the semis that Kmart had.
That's correct. Not that I understand.
Okay.
Would there be more appreciable activity behind that structure under the new use than there was prior?
You know, I believe there would not be, based on the fact that the entrance would be on the west side of the property and besides general, how can I put this?
Where's the loading dock now?
That's what I mean. The general loading and so forth that would happen would possibly happen on the east end of the site, which is where I believe it currently exists. So it wouldn't be any different, I suppose, than what it currently is, besides less traffic, less truck traffic for that matter.
Okay, thanks. Other question?
It is basically a 24-hour facility, correct? I mean, the storage facilities are 24-hour accessible?
As I understand, the access is, again, purely from the interior. It requires a code access to get in, so clients would have essentially a card that gets them into the site. What I can't answer for you is whether that allows them access with a vehicle into the site or if it's personal access.
I was kind of going that way to allude to if, and I don't know the exact location of the storage facilities within the building, is there exterior access to the storage, the individual storage facilities?
Not to my knowledge, no.
And I guess a few of my other views or questions are the type of security that we have. Is the property going to be fenced or closed? Lighting, cameras, which you did actually hit upon, did you say the ref was here?
I believe there is a ref present here today. And those are questions I don't know quite as well. Those are not part of the land use side of my codes. They would be bound to the codes that we have as far as the city that do require lighting and so forth, but for security, that would be on the business themselves and how they address that.
To allude to that, since it would be a 24-hour access, I don't mean to add costs to the potential occupant, but is there going to be anybody on, is there going to be a staff? When I mean staff, I mean anybody going to be on-site to, is it overnight?
Sure.
Would you guys like to come up and answer these?
Sure.
Let me just stop here.
Please, and tell us who you are.
All right.
Mayor, you want to open the...
Oh, sorry, open the public hearing.
I'm Scott Bracken. I'm the marketing company president for U-Haul Company in Oklahoma. As far as security goes, what we'll have is, it'll basically be, of course, inside storage. It'll be load and unload access from the inside. If you want to drive inside, you'll be able to drive basically through a garage door, drive inside, be able to load and unload inside. Each storage unit will be individually alarmed. We'll know exactly who's getting in, when they got in, and we'll have a report that prints out, or we can go in and access this and tell you who accessed whoever's storage room at whatever time. We'll also have cameras that monitor each door location for sure. We'll have them around the showroom as well and throughout storage. In order to gain access to the storage for 24-hour access, you'll be issued a card swipe, and instead of being able to drive in, you won't be allowed to drive in after hours. It'll just be through like a door access like that. You'll swipe it, it'll give you access, and it'll cut the alarm off to your individual unit when you swipe. So if you gain access to the storage and you decide you want to go into someone else's unit, it's immediately going to let our people and things know that monitor the system when that happens.
Okay. And are the cameras interior also?
Yes, sir.
They would not be able to access the overhead door from the inside?
No, not after, not after it gets cut. Yeah, after hours, no, sir.
What are the hours of operation?
We operate basically Monday through Saturday, 7 to 7, 9 to 5 on Sundays, and then Friday is one extra hour. We're open till 8:00.
Now, the access and egress are from the front only?
Well, it...
How about the back?
It wouldn't be from the back. It would be either from the front or, I'm guessing maybe the west side on that one. It depends on where they put the little...
The west would be front, in that case.
Okay, yeah, yeah, right, right.
Unless you're going to change it.
No, no, no. You're right.
But not from the east?
Not from the east.
Never? Nothing behind it?
Nothing behind it. Matter of fact, we really wouldn't have any use behind it. You know, we'd, of course, put some lighting back there. If there's no lighting there, we'd try to keep it minimal, but we have no really use back there.
Other questions?
What about your rental equipment, your trucks, trailers and all of that? Are you going to fill up that whole parking lot with trucks and trailers?
Absolutely not, no, sir. Our best interest is the trucks and trailers are on the road. I know there's been some objections about how maybe some other dealers have leave their trucks or trailers kind of strolling about the lot, and that would not be our case at all. We'd have a, at our corporate stores, we have a strict way that we set our equipment up, and each location has to follow it. You know, I wouldn't be able to tell you exactly how much equipment would be there because it would kind of vary, you know, what's coming in versus how much equipment we send out, but that would not be our purpose is to fill up that lot, no, sir.
But at any point, it would be orderly.
I'm sorry?
At any point, it would be orderly.
Oh, yes, sir. It would be very orderly.
I have a little two-part question.
Sure.
Largest truck you rent?
Yes, sir.
It's 2018. You don't rent 18-wheeler.
Oh, no, sir. No type of, the only thing that we have coming into our lot, it would be a, at two days a week, we usually get like a box order that comes in, and it actually comes in, it doesn't come in on a semi or anything like that, it comes in on a box truck, but that would be the biggest thing that we have two times a week, would deliver our boxes.
And that kind of answers my second.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition?
Okay, good evening. I'm Lari Hopkins. I'm representing the seven dental professionals and staff of Hopkins Dental Clinic and Orthodontic Specialist of Oklahoma. You should have a copy of a letter submitted that has all of the seven professionals' signatures. I'd like to start with saying that the least of my concerns is my green space when the trucks come out, but I do question, there is an egress on the north side that is directly in front of our property, and perhaps that is going to be closed, but if it's available, I think it would be utilized. And if people with a CDL can't make that turn, I'm a little concerned when private citizens that are renting a piece of equipment are given a fairly sizable vehicle that they may or may not be familiar with. But I think our biggest concerns are a little bit different. First of all, when I started trying to investigate this on behalf of our doctors, the very first, and maybe I'm just not very good at Googling, but one of the very first things that came up talked about how environmentally controlled storage is, of course, wonderful for when you have something that needs to be temperature-controlled, but there's also a fairly large history of it being used for overnight meth labs, it being used for drug distribution. In extreme situations, there have been people who use it for housing when they feel desperate. It definitely increases theft, and then, of course, just the pestilence and what have you that comes with this type of storage. Now, having said that, you know, I don't think they're going to make the evening news or anything like that, but we do have experience at our property within the 25 years that we've been there. There at one time was a little filling station there on the corner of Dunlop and Harrison. Wonderful couple ran that, very diligent owner-operators, and they had a U-Haul stored facility there. You could rent the trucks. And the problem isn't during the business hours, when there's somebody on-site that's making sure that people enter and exit appropriately, or they are renting or dropping off their U-Haul. It's when it's after hours and it becomes a key drop-off, or I can see where the card swipe, and there's no longer somebody on the facility, it opens it up for a less responsible utilization of both facilities. We very often would witness a truck pulling up after hours and people simply sweeping their trash out the back of it onto the lawn, and of course, where Oklahoma, the wind sweeps it right down the plain. And, you know, sometimes what they were sweeping out tend to scurry away, and we had an increase of vagrants. It seemed to be a very popular place to sleep under a large truck when the weather was not wonderful. And our staff, both our dental office and OSO, we're predominantly staff of women. We have one or two male doctors, but for the most part, it's women showing up long before dawn and sometimes long after, and that's a concern to us. We have also experienced, and we had several near misses, but we had one true hit, people that are using the trailers that hitch and drop it off after hours that don't necessarily know to secure it or how to secure it. And we had one that had no blocks on it, and it definitely rolled away and did some major damage to one of our employee's cars. But we did have a few other near misses as well. You referred to that traffic would be reduced. We aren't necessarily wanting traffic reduced. We purchased, and our business is based on exposure dirt of the reputable type of traffic. We like that, we prefer that. We also, as people who've made an investment in this community, we would rather see some sort of retail that more of the community benefits from, that we all would utilize, that we all might go to, and that would also increase the revenue through taxes for our community. So what we want to see is something go in there that's going to be like a Kmart or any other name-brand store. And I think we can draw these, if you look at everything that's been going on recently on Kickapoo, starting down Harrison. We have lots of new buildings. We have a bank that's getting ready to go up. We have businesses like the Boomerang Headquarters. This building has sat vacant for a very short period of time, but some buildings that had sat vacant for a much longer time are now becoming very productive. We really don't feel like it's setting vacant for a long period of time is a concern, and we're a business that wouldn't like a vacant building sitting next to us. I also have spoken to a few of our existing storage facilities, and my understanding is that a great number of our existing storage facilities are not full at this time. And I can't help but question if we're going to simply bring in a new type of storage facility to fill a vacant building and end up putting somebody that's already in our business, that's already a member of our community, out of business, and we're dealing with another vacant building. I would like, if they're going to do this, it'd be nice if there were 24-hour security. I understand cameras and what have you, but it's not the same as a security guard or a staff member that checks in and checks out, that's available 24/7. I think people are just going to be much more responsible with their whole establishment if there's some accountability with a person and not a camera or swipe card history. We're all for businesses, and we aren't necessarily against this business, but this is also a business that Shawnee is not so large that if it were located somewhere else in our community, somebody's going to find it. It doesn't need street traffic or be right in the middle of a very productive and growing business area. So we would just like some consideration of some of these issues that are a concern for us.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Will you be signed in? My name is Mike Johnson. She kind of stole a whole lot of my thunder from what I was...
You just hit the new points.
Well, she kind of covered pretty much all of them. You know, and I've lived in that residential section behind the Kmart Building there. I live on Gilpin. I've lived there for almost 30 years. In that timeframe, the traffic has exploded up and down my street. My first move there, I had twin girls. I had no problem with letting them play in the front yard. I have a six-year-old now. No way. I can only see this increasing the traffic problem. Not only that, but you're, it's a business that is oriented toward a very limited number of people. I've had to use U-Haul, rider trucks, whatever. I drove for a living. I've seen what the inexperience of driving one of those type of vehicles has caused. I really don't want one of those in my neighborhood for people to be swinging around the block to get straightened out to go, decide they need to go the other direction. We have U-Haul facilities on almost every corner in this town. You go any direction and you can find a U-Haul or a rider truck. I don't see a need to have one where this is. I think that property, like the lady just said, could be utilized in a much better type of operation that could be relatively, a lot better situation or a lot more productive for the people of this community in this town. That's pretty much what I have to say. I just don't, you know, I don't think that's the, you know, there's a lot of property here that's, you know, somebody's looking to rent a vehicle of such nature... here that's, uh, you know, somebody's looking to, to rent a vehicle of such nature, it doesn't make any difference if they're on the north end of town, south end of town, they don't have to be right in the middle of a residential section. So...
Thank you, Mike. We have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Brown. I have lived in Northridge pretty much my whole life, I grew up in Northridge and walked up to Kmart every, every day after school or on weekends to spend my allowance, so I'm familiar with the area very well. I'm, live on Rice now, which is directly behind where Kmart used to be, and it's also going to be a propane, um, station, and that's a danger, I, I feel like, you know, I don't really want, I don't want the smell of propane, I don't want, you know, air pollution, that kind of thing. Um, there are self-storage units every half-mile, starting up Harrison where an old car wash used to be, then you come down to Independence and there's one right, um, behind where Walgreens is, then we would have the U-Haul, and then you go down, uh, keep going down Harrison, there's another new storage center by a car dealership, and then you go past I-40, there's more, new, brand-new self-storage. There is so much self-storage that I feel like, you know, as a community, we just need to purge instead of collecting a bunch of junk in self-storages all over town, so that it turns out looking like, you know, we live in a warehouse district, and, and then right in the middle of town, I, I, and like she said, the tax from that for the city wouldn't be nearly as much as, say, a retail place would be. I feel like it would be much more, uh, better for homeownership and home values to continue with how it is now. Uh, Kmart closes in October, so I don't feel like, I mean, we already have interest in the building, I don't know that we've set, let it sit, uh, long enough to really see what interest there is in that building. Um, but I certainly, um, Ms. Larrie Hopkins stated a lot of the same facts that I had, but, uh, I'm, I'm worried about, I've heard from, um, uh, police officers in town that, uh, storage facilities are bad about having, um, homeless people going through dumpsters and, um, on the premises for that reason, and that scares me to have a house so close to something that might materialize. Um, I just feel like in the, right in the middle of town, it's not a good fit, uh, that we need to keep a healthy balance with what we have as far as commerce in our town, and, um, more storage facility is not what I feel like we need.
Thank you.
That's my opinion.
Any questions? Are any discussion among the board? Is that everyone? No? Do you have anything new to say?
Bill Hazelwood, uh, want to, just a couple things. First of all, I would urge what Ms. Hopkins and Ms. Brown have already stated to this board. The other thing is, if the board decides to go forward with this, I would ask for some restrictions, uh, on this particular business. First of all, um, I don't know that we can restrict their, uh, hours of operation, uh, I think seven to seven is probably appropriate for what they do. However, I think there should be some kind of a noise abatement between the business and the residences that are just exactly east of it, in other words, like a, uh, a very well-built fence for the length of the property that would, uh, bait any noise from any trucks being delivered in the middle of the night or even during the day. Uh, I know that, uh, we're sit directly behind, uh, the property, and we've got, uh, grandchildren that are young, two-years-old, they take a nap during the day, and if we have trucks moving in and out of there, uh, obviously that's a problem. Uh, the second, uh, request I would make is, uh, that, he said that basically it's inside storage. Basically, to me, doesn't mean that it's all inside storage, that tells me that most of it is inside storage, so I have a concern that there may be, uh, outside storage that you can get to, and especially on the north side, there's some chain link there that could be used as a storage part. So, um, the other restriction I would request is that any storage, if the board approves this, be internal-only, accessed internal-only and not outside. Uh, the third restriction that I would request at this time is that if he's serious about no equipment or anything going in the back, and there, there's access to the building from the back, that that be the restriction, that there be no equipment in the back, no access to the back, seal those doors or whatever you want to, so that in the middle of the night, somebody doesn't drive up and drop their truck in the trailer in the back because there's no, nothing close to the building up front. So I'd request that that be done. Um, he said there's deliveries that will be made by a box truck, I don't know where those go, I don't know if those go in the back, he didn't say, or if they go in the front. So I'd request that, uh, again, the back be restricted and limited. Um, I think that's all I've got, unless there's any questions.
Any questions, Bill? Thank you, Bill.
No, but I might like to hear from, uh, from the company back. Uh, prospect question.
You don't have to sign in.
Okay.
Question seems to be coming up about, uh, what activities might exist behind the building, uh, at what hours, if there's do, you say there's going to be new lights put back there?
Sure.
Will this cause light pollution to the properties behind the building?
No, usually what we...
There is such a thing as light pollution, as you probably know.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, we would, anything, any new lights we put up would be LEDs, um, and i- in, in an area like that, we'd, we'd want the light to go down and not into the neighborhood because that could cause a, a disruption, so it'd be basically lights that, that go on the ground instead of outward.
What's the height of the wall behind there between the buildings? Uh, I guess a met code at some point, uh, as far as the separation between the properties back, or is that strictly the property, house fences basically that are back there?
Yet there is a, I, I've driven around it, I know there's a fence back there. I don't have a problem with us putting up a new fence back there, if that's, if, if that's what we need to do, I'm, I'm all for it. Um, I, I wouldn't have an issue with that at all.
Something sufficiently high to totally exclude the properties?
Sure.
You would be...
That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a problem.
Like, that's, that's all I had.
I have a question.
Sure.
Mrs. Brown brought up a, a dinner, uh, propane.
Right.
Selling propane.
Yes, sir.
What does that mean?
Um, well, at, at, at most of our corporate stores, we do have propane that we sell there, um, as long as the city allows it, we, we, you know, we'd go to the city to, to get our permits if, if, if it's allowable, and what we'd do is we'd fill, uh, propane bottles, um, for like gas grills, um, and things of, of that. We also do trailer hitches and, uh, wiring at our facilities as well, for trailers and vehicles.
Is that what all be inside? I'm sorry.
So that, that's going to be a large tank then?
Yes, sir.
That's going to be...
Yes, sir, they, they usually range, uh, um, around 500 gallons, but we enclose those with, with bollards, and, uh, it, it would, uh, it would be very secure.
Is that a horizontal tank?
Uh, it, it would be a, a...
Vertical tank?
Yes, sir.
And, and isn't propane filling regulated by Corporation Commissioner or somebody?
Yes, sir.
So, the, the...
Where would that exist?
The equipment is inspected...
Oh, yes, sir.
...periodically, just like any other propane station.
Yes, sir, it, it would be, we, they, uh, propane is, you know, regulated by the state.
Where would that be placed? Is that interior to the building?
No, would not be inside on propane, no, sir.
Recognize that, where would it be?
It, it, it would be somewhere on the, on the parking lot, um, we, we wouldn't want to put it directly by the, the road, but, you know...
It wouldn't be behind the building?
No, sir, it would not be behind the building, it would be somewhere on the front parking lot.
Any other questions? Justin, let me, let me ask you something, being, being in the planning area, it, the, that's a tall building, the likelihood of noise of people coming in and out of the parking lot from the west is, would seem to me to be not likely to penetrate through or over the building, there, I mean, there's nothing to deflect that noise.
I would tend to agree.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Are there any additional discussion?
You've got some more?
Got one more.
Hi, my name is Beth Kennedy, and, um, I live on Beckley Street, which is in that same neighborhood, and my neighbors have voiced all the concerns. I only have one thing to add, and that is the fact that there is not a stoplight on Dunloop and Harrison, and so the thought of people driving large vehicles that are inexperienced and getting out onto Harrison without a stoplight concerns me.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to add.
Is there any further discussion among the commissioners?
I might add one question, though, we could put the requirement of filling a larger wall behind there as a condition of disapproval, if we did.
That would really probably fit one to...
Could that requirement be...
...flat instead of...
Yeah.
I don't know that we can, we can actually do that.
We could.
Not, not under a strict reason, or strict reason. So we're...
Something like a condition's permit, we have that ability, but as far as the traditional zoning transfer, no.
So what we're looking at today is just changing the zoning. They're still going to have to come before us with a...
Just be administrative review, just the building permit.
Building permit review.
But not a flat, because it's already built, so we can't control what they do at that point in any way.
Just regulated by city code.
Sir, I, I mean, I, I, I tell you right now, we, we put up a big fence back there, if, if that's what the neighborhood wanted, I mean, I, we, we would do it, I don't have an issue with it.
Is there a way to formalize a few of these with, between the city and U-Haul for planning and maybe us defer this?
But what I think we might be able to do is defer action, and we could get a site plan that was maybe more descriptive from the applicant, that, and then they, they could self, uh, they could offer up certain concessions voluntarily that would be binding, and we could work with city attorney on that, that language.
Is that good with you guys?
And everything in the surrounding area, or say, like where I am, I'm C-3, so everything's, most of it's C-3 already, up and down Harrison.
Yes, I think that, that's the, the cha, the challenge with this site, is that, you know, were it not for the fact that...
It should have already been C-3.
Personal storage is allowed by right in C-3, which means there would not be a public hearing typically, but because there's own C-3P in a shopping center, and so, within the shopping center zoning, there's very intensive uses, uh, automob, automobile dealerships, um, department stores, large hardware stores, lumberyards that are allowed, you know, today without any review or approval by, uh, by this body, and so, um, this is only before you because of the, of that, that nuance related to storage, um, that requires that rezoning. But, uh, based on your concerns, I think it would be, uh, prudent to defer, and we can work with the applicant to see if we can address some of these concerns.
Chair, but chair moves to defer until the, what would the next meeting be?
Is that enough time, or should we wait?
We can always defer to get if necessary, why don't we do, um, I think, thirty, why don't we do the 16th of April?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford.
Can we bring the fire department, expect to meet all man on this meeting, save an empty?
I think...
We do the in, internal reviews on, on projects, and, you know, they'll have to submit a, a full set of...
Their federal enforcement.
Architectural plans. This is such a large building, it has a fire suppression system, there's going to have to be, you know, numerous inspections that are done on a building this size.
Call the question. Motion carries six-zero. Thank you to the public for your input, and, uh, and we consider it important and will consider your concerns. Item 12, consideration of approval of preliminary plat for Maple Development LLC located on Shawnee Mall Drive, east of the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad tracks, case number SO-418, applicant Sid and Javol Inc., deferred by the Planning Commission to the April fourth, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion to defer this item?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford, seconded by Commissioner Salter. Call the question. Motion carries six, uh, five-zero, sorry. Item 13, consideration of approval of preliminary plat for First United Bank of Shawnee located 2600 North Harrison Avenue, case study SO-518, applicant Mr. William Farendorf.
Thank you. Existing on the current site, located on Harrison and MacArthur Streets, southeast corner, was the, uh, Joe Cooper Ford Building. At this time, it has been demolished, and you can see some basic grading happening on-site. The intent for this, this four-acre parcel here is to break it, um, break it into two particular lots, the northern lot being, uh, a site for a new First United Bank. The site on the south, I believe, uh, would be open for general commercial enterprise. The site is currently Zone C-3, so this is compatible without any rezone. Um, staff would like to add too, that, that really, this is an important intersection for our, our city here, and as it had, as it had previously existed, the, um, it was completely impervious with the parking lot, of course, and the structure. So with this development, as it moves forward, they'll be, again, bound to the standards of landscaping and facade requirements and so forth. If you drive by, currently, they, they do have a, an elevation rendering of what the, the building will look like when completed, it, it will most definitely be an asset to the city, so staff does recommend approval with the three listed conditions.
Are the conditions significant or standard?
Very standard conditions, really, for preliminary plats, the main conditions you'll always see on these will be the construction documents that are required prior to final plat review.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion?
A move that we accept with the three conditions.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Item 14, discussion, consideration, and possible action of a resolution to formalize the Community Service Contract Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, in your packet this evening is said resolution. Um, we wanted to strike a balance between, uh, being overly detailed but also covering, uh, the basis, uh, as requested by the commission on, uh, March 5th. So the resolution before you this evening, um, has a number of sections, goes through the establishment and creation of this body, powers and duties, how it's comprised, terms, meetings, eligibility standards for funding, similar to those that have been established, uh, now for 25 years or so, and then, uh, the review process. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'm, I'm hopeful that this is, uh, generally what, um, uh, the majority of you were looking for in, in this formality. We, uh, again, we did, um, uh, look closely at what was done and what's been working well for us, uh, from 1993 onward, and, uh, just wanted to formalize that, uh, in the form of this resolution per your direction.
Are there any questions?
Is Joe going to have to read this entire resolution?
No, he just reads the title. Is there a motion first?
I'll move.
Moved by Commissioner Bouchon, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Now you can read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution establishing the Contract Review Committee for the City of Shawnee, setting forth various provisions and official duties.
Are there any questions, comments? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Fifteen, acknowledge the sales tax report from March of 2018.
Um, our sales, um, tax that we received was, it's actually for February sales, was $1,308,000. Um, sales tax part was down 62,000, and the use tax was down about, um, 35,000, so overall we're down $100,000 this month.
Is that a timing factor, perhaps?
I don't know, I haven't, before this went out, um, we just got the reports, I haven't really looked, as you can see, the retail trade, all the sections are down, um, it's hard to tell. The Oklahoma Tax Commission said a lot of, a lot of cities were down, except if they had a new tax, you know, new sales tax.
It fits my percentage.
I'm sorry?
It fits my percentage.
Also, our overall revenues are pretty much flat at the same time this year as they were last year, so...
So, on a use tax, like, my utility bills, I noticed, were lower than they were this time last year, the last...
That comes on the sales tax.
So that's, that's what, that's, when they're lower, those are lower.
You pay, you pay sales taxes stuff on your utilities, so, and what they remit, the franchise fees are also less based on, you know, how high the gas is or how high the electric, those variables depending on the weather, and those revenues are down a little too, so, not good.
Lots of sources of revenue. Item 16, city manager. Item 16, city manager.
I'll be brief this evening. There's a detailed report in your packet, probably the thing I'm most excited about is our soon-to-be launch of the new city website. On that first page of that report, there's a snapshot, a screenshot of the, of the new, of just a portion of the new homepage. Staff is putting the finishing touches and editing marks on this as we speak, and it should be about 10 business days or so from launch, so we're excited about that endeavor. Second, we have a number of activities happening next week. Blue Zones is hosting a bikeability workshop, and, and there's a bike tour that starts at 4:30 at First Christian Church next Monday, and that's followed by a public forum at 5:30 that they're sponsoring. We will have city staff there, but that's to really focus in on Broadway Street and look at pedestrian improvements that we're doing, and also look at, we can maybe make it more, more bike-friendly and safe for the public to do, to use in that regard as well. Also next week, our comprehensive planning consultants are in town, and they are in town primarily to meet with staff and kind of kick this process off, that the more in-depth public meetings will occur later in the year, probably starting in, in May or June. But we wanted to make sure they were in town and could learn more about Blue Zones, be here for this public forum, so that is exciting as well. And as part of that process, we're going to be establishing a steering committee, and, and I believe the mayor is going to talk to a little bit more about that later on tonight, but anybody that is particularly interested in serving on that or kind of being involved in this process in a little bit more detailed way, please let, let us know. Thank you.
Any questions of the city manager? Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners' comments?
I'd like to thank Director Bryce and city manager for coming through for me after eight months to get the improvements to the tennis courts, both down Woodland Park and the high school courts as well. It was kind of, I looked at the courts there and our kids, and that we had teams coming into play there, and the fences were all bent out of shape, they were 40-years-old, they were cheap metal when they were originally built 40-years ago, and we had to push quite a bit, pull some money various places, and I thank you, James, for coming, from your budget, a good portion of that, your helping getting it done, and I think the kids are really enjoying it right now. Appreciate it.
A card laid is a card played.
Is it?
Yeah. No, go ahead.
No, I just, I wanted to thank the citizens for coming out, the individuals with, with U-Haul, too. I do want to reaffirm, and I noticed most of them left, I did want to reaffirm their statements, their comments, their, did not fall on deaf ears. We, as a board, sit here, that, we work for you, by the way, and I wanted to just express my appreciation for you, you guys coming out. I went Friday night to the block party downtown. Anyone that hasn't got to do that yet, that was, that was my first, I guess it was the first one for the year, I was going to go the rest of it, it was a great time, had a, everyone needs to do that, to do that. The fire station chief is coming along nicely, looks like they're making great strides now. That's, yeah, it's good to see. And my last comment, I registered my storm shelter online today, Don. It went very smoothly, I'd like to encourage anyone that has one registered, it's getting to be that time of year, and it was very, very easy to do, click and drag the thing on top of your house and tell you, tell them where it is, and that's all there was to it.
Thank you. Ben? No comment. A couple of things, just for, for city staff, really directed more at planning than anything. The, the, and it goes back to the country club, that's, that's my area, but aside from that, I think if, if the city planning staff is aware of a controversy between a developer and the residents, I think we need to encourage them to resolve that, that disagreement before they come to us. I don't think there's any point in the city becoming embroiled in that, possibly being named in, in any kind of litigation or anything, so I think we tell them, go make your piece and then come back, and we'll see what we can do, just food for thought. Justin mentioned that we will be having a comprehensive plan steering committee that will be gearing up, and certainly, I would like to have at least one of the commissioners, I will sit on it as, as mayor, but in addition to that, if there are any volunteers, then holler at me and just be aware of our limitation in terms of having a quorum. With that, we are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. No, we're not.
Recession. Recession, sir.
We'll recess by the power of the chair. Open the Shawnee Airport Authority agenda. Would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Gillum, seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
We are adjourned and move to the agenda of the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Would also consider a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Commissioner Salter, seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
This meeting is adjourned, and we reconvene to, for item 19, consideration and possible vote to enter into executive session to discuss status and negotiations between the IAFF Local Number 206 for a new collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2018-19, and to discuss city's last best offer in connection with the schedule, scheduled interest arbitration for a collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2017-2018 as authorized by 25OS Section 307B2. Is there a motion to enter the executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford, seconded by Commissioner Salter. Call the question. Motion carries five aye. You're welcome to stay or not. Thank you. Reconvene, consider, item 20, consideration, possible action on the items discussed in executive session regarding the status of negotiations with IAFF Local 206 for a new collective bargaining, bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2018-2019, and to discuss the city's last best offer in connection with the scheduled interest arbitration for collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2017-2018 as authorized by 25OS 307B2. There was no action taken in the executive session. Is that all I need to do?
Well, just-
Do we need a motion?
There's a request for any action to be taken, no. There's no need unless somebody makes a motion. Makes a motion.
Is there a motion? We are adjourned. Thank you.